Good evening, everybody. We're going to call to order the City Council adjourned regular meeting of Monday, September 23rd, 2024. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call?
Mayor Nefolda.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hasselbrink.
Here.
Councilmember Dobie.
Here.
Councilmember Hibbard.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
At this time, if you could please stand and join us at the, with the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilmember Hibbard will lead us on that, and if you could remain standing for the invocation.
Thank you. Please put your right hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, I would just like to say thank you. Thank you for this day, thank you for this meeting, and I ask that you bless each and every one of us in here, and that you provide your guidance and your wisdom as we are here to tend to the city's business. Thank you very much for allowing us to live in such a great city and allowing us to assist in leading this city and continuing its greatness to come. In your name we pray. Amen. At this time, we have a presentation by Senator Janet Nguyen, who will provide us with a legislative update.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember, and residents of Los Alamos. Again, I'm Senator Janet Nguyen. It's a pleasure to be here at tonight's council meeting to provide a legislative update. As your Senator, I am proud and honored to serve as Los Alamos Voice in the State Senate in Sacramento and to fight for initiatives that help build a better, stronger, and safer community. As your representative and together with city leadership, we have accomplished much to the betterment of Los Alamos. I'm looking forward to the much anticipated grand reopening of the Los Alamos Community Center on February, October 4th. I saw it last weekend when you had Los Al, served Los Al. I drove by and saw it. It looks amazing, so I'm really, really excited. As you know, last year, working together with Mayor Dobie, we were able to secure $2.5 million of state funding to help make this project a reality, and I cannot wait again to celebrate with the city and with the residents. As you know, some of you know, I represent the 36th Senate District, which is majority of Orange County cities. Orange County has 34 cities, and so majority of those are in our district. We have the entire coast of Orange County of 41 miles, so from Seal Beach, Huntington Beach, Newport Beach, Dana Point, Laguna Beach, and San Clemente, and Capistrano Beach as well. And then we go up north, which, you know, we have Fountain Valley, Garden Grove, Westminster, Rossmore, Los Al, Cypress, La Palma, Stanton, half of Brenna Park, and then we go up north further to Three City in LA, which is Artesia, Hawaiian Garden, and Cerritos. I represent approximately 1 point, close to 1.1 million individuals, residents, in the district. This year, the bill that we, both houses combined introduced 2,149 bills, and of those, about, close to 1,000 that went to the governor, and he has to September 30th to sign these bills. So you can either sign them, veto them, and if he does neither, by September 30th, they become a law without his signature. Of the year, eight years I've been up in Sacramento, I've not, I don't remember a time when the governor just let a bill ride on its own. So we're anticipating by September 30th, there will be notices to us whether our bills die or live. The other part is the governor has called for a special session to look at addressing the gas prices and the oil crisis that's happening in California. So how it works in Sacramento is the governor can call for special session, but the Speaker and the Pro Tem has to schedule those hearings. As of right now, the Assembly, the Speaker, has scheduled hearings for the Assembly side, and they have gone up to Sacramento to attend to those hearings. On the Senate side, we have not heard anything, and the Pro Tem has not committed to the governor in scheduling anything, and so the Senate's not going to go up, nothing's going to happen. Both houses has to head back up to Sacramento, so I wouldn't be surprised, you know, if there is a hearing, I'm most likely going to be going back to Sacramento because I'm on nine standing committee, and so I'm sure one of those committee will be the committees that, or more, more than one of those committee, will be the committees that will be heard or will be hosting a hearing. With that, you know, I just want to touch based on a few issues and not talk about 2,000 bills. If you would like to talk about 2,000 bills, we can be here like Westminster till 5:00 AM. So, no? Okay. I just want to make sure, you know. So, one issue, fentanyl is extremely important, and as you know, we have done town halls in Los Alamos last year and across my district in regards to fentanyl. Fentanyl is the number one killer to young adults between the ages of 18 to 45. We are literally watching a whole generation vanish before our eyes. We've teamed up with Perla Mendoza, who is Project Eli, and we travel across my district to talk about fentanyl and to inform parents of what the danger of fentanyl and to also educate children as well. So that's one part of it, but the other part is making legislation that will put away the bad guys. With your chief, who joined us last year, when we had a press conference with the sheriff in Seal Beach, we were able to finally, after three years, pass the legislation and signed by the governor, those who possess this fentanyl with the intent to sell, we will put you away an extra up to 25 more years. We have to put these drug dealers away. It's not an if, it's we have to, because while we're educating the families and the children, we also need to put away the bad guys. And so we have to do, you know, several approaches. Put away the bad guys, educate, and also to making sure that there's, arm the community with information and also making sure that facilities, so lots of bills last, that has been signed are several, which is all concert halls, stadiums, all of them has to have some type of overdose medication. Sports arena, public facilities, schools, teachers and school administrators are also trained as well. So it's important that we have these medications, overdose medication. Now remember, these medications, like Narcan, does not reverse an overdose. It only helps until the ambulance or the firefighter comes. Reversing an overdose has to be medically done at the hospital. So those are the kind of things that we've been tackling, three-pronged approaches to fighting fentanyl. And fentanyl is creeping in under 18. Five years old, eight years old, 10 years old, 11 years, 12 years, 13 years are dying from fentanyl as well. So we have to educate our children because they are making them look like Skittles and Smarty Candies. And so again, I want to thank, you know, former Mayor Dobie for hosting the town hall with us here last year to talk about the fentanyl, and so we really appreciate that. The second issue is animals. One of my proudest achievements is helping the animals in our county shelters because they don't have a voice, so we need to be their voice. So I know a lot of my constituents loves our animals, and you know, we have great local shelters from Seal Beach to Westminster, you name it, but the county animal shelter has had a lot of problems. During COVID and after COVID, over 180% euthanization rate. Before COVID, the county facility was open for public to go in any time to look at the animals and adopt if they feel like it. During COVID, it was shut down, and you only can see the animal via picture online, and you have to make an appointment. After COVID, it was still the same. Until last year, end of last year, I wrote an op-ed to call on the county to just open up their facility because the euthanizing rate, euthanization rate of the county continues to grow. So they finally opened completely now. Second, though, is that they had a lot of problems internally. One of it is that there is no medical record of any of these animals when they come in. So you had a husky who got hit by a car, shows up to the county facility, bleed to death internally, three days later dies. No medical record on whether it was seen by a vet, it was given any types of medication, nothing. Then a cat comes in and missing half a limb, blood gushing out, also no record as well. So I had a bill this year that ended up being signed by the governor, was SB 1478, which, and we work with the California Veterinary Association on this bill to get, to making sure that we work with the veterinarians so that they have the tools they need to help in these county facility. So the bill would now require that all charts, that there's a guideline for veterinarians in county facilities, that they have to have a chart, a medical record of intake assessment, dispensing of any pain medicine, treating injuries and diseases, and also reasons for euthanization. So now it's required by, for county facilities across the state of California, not just in Orange County, that now they have to have these medical records, and we need to know why, what's going on in the county. And so there were other bills that we introduced as well. Unfortunately, they didn't get out of appropriation or one of the committees. The other one is crime. As you know, crime is a big deal in our state. It seems like it's, commit a crime in California, there's no consequences, and it's really unfortunate. The good news is that we did bipartisan support, and the governor signed most of the bill, some of them are still on his desk, on our retail theft reform, and that's been very helpful. But then there's also confusion between, because the governor came out and said, well, we have the retail theft bill reform passed, we don't need Prop 36. I'm not here promoting Prop 36, but I want people to understand the difference is that Prop 36 has things in there that the retail theft bill does not. So for example, it now adds fentanyl to the list of drugs for which it is a felony to possess as any amount while possessing a firearm. That's in Prop 36 that was not in the retail bills. It also now requires a judge to warn defendants charged with dealing hard drugs, that they could be charged with murder if their customer dies. Next is that it also allows prosecutors to combine multiple misdemeanor thefts committed in a recent time span or location into a felony. Because as you remember, Prop 47, 10 years ago, allowed folks to go and just go from city to city, 7-Eleven, Targets, all day long, and at least they steal less than $950. Now we're looking at if it's within a recent time span or a specific location that's been hit multiple times by that one individual or group of individual, it would now be a felony and not just a misdemeanor anymore. So Prop 36 will help and make sure that people understand that committing a crime in California, there will be consequences. Quite frankly, for me, I have an 11-year-old, 13-year-old, I just want to make sure that they're safe if they're going to the mall, because every mall in my district, from Cerritos Mall to Bellatera, Westminster, Asian Mall, Fashion Island, you name it, has been robbed in the last several years. So every mall has been robbed, and this is where our kids, as they get older and they want to hang out with their friends, is the safest place, at least we thought it was. So let's make it safe again so that these children can safely go to these malls and that we don't, we as parents don't have to worry. The other issue is homelessness. The state has given the counties and cities $24 billion in the last several years, and I don't think it has changed. Orange County homeless population has gone up 28% last year. Some city has done well, some city has not. And so one thing the governor has now instructed, as you know about the US Supreme Court hearing, ruling that local government can now remove encampments or homeless camps. The governor has now instructed all state agencies to urgently remove encampments from public places that belong to the state. The governor cannot order local government to dismantle their camps, but they are at risk losing funding if they don't comply. His order encourages at least a two-days' notice before the homeless camp is forcefully removed and items stored for a minimum of 60 days. Cities are encouraged to apply for the state grant from Prop 1 funds, which helps provide mental health treatment for the homeless and others, and so the other programs can also qualify for that as well. The other part is that in terms of homelessness, I've been in the forefront of asking for auditing. I believe that if the money, if the program's working, let's put more money into it, but if it's not working, it's time to get rid of it. We should not continue to put money into homeless programs that are not working for cities. On top of that is I've encouraged the county to give the money to the cities. Let you make the decision how you enforce homeless programs in your own city, because I'll tell you, given the district I have, those who are homeless in San Clemente and Newport Beach are very different than those who are homeless in Artesia, Hawaiian Garden, or Los Al, Huntington Beach, Seal Beach, Stanton, Garden Grove. They're very unique because every city's unique, so one size does not fit all. And so I believe that the county should hand these money over and let the city give them a plan. Let the city say, hey, we probably need two more police officers, or we might need a rehab center, or we need some wraparound programs, or we need, you know, affordable housing, versus us, versus the county telling you what to do with the money. It's like with the state, I'm a supporter that let the county run the county, and the state shouldn't be involved. The state should trust the county to do it. If you're not doing your job, then the state will intervene, and that's where the county should also be as well. And I think that that way we can at least help, because right now, leaving these individuals out is not compassionate of us. There's people dying every month in Orange County. So it's not compassionate of us at all to allow them and let them be out there and risk the fact that they will end up dying. Let's help them. Let's get them in a program, let's help them, but the city knows better on what you need than the county, and the county knows better than what it needs than the state. And so with that, again, it's an honor to represent you in the state, and my district office is in Huntington Beach. The reason for that is that from Huntington Beach to, from Huntington, I think that's a cue for me to finish up. But from Huntington Beach to Artesia is about 45 minutes without traffic, and from Huntington Beach to San Clemente is about an hour without traffic, and I'm not sure when there's no traffic around here, but, you know, I figure I state that, but we really try to work and find the most central location possible so that it's accessible to anybody from either the book end, the northern end or the south end of our district. And if you would like any information on any bills, and that goes with residents as well, feel free to reach out to my office, give us the bill number, and we will respond after September 30th, because we don't know when the governor signs what bill, and we don't have a way to track it, and so we would have to just go online and look for those specific bill that you're looking for, and so help us, but, you know, just let us know. We will be patient, we'll, once September 30th is over, we'll find out. And the other part is that the governor, you know, some days he's got dozens of them that he's signed or vetoed, and other days could be the next day or last two, three days. So we don't really know when the governor does what he does until it makes it public. Our phone number for my office is 714-374-4000. That's 714-374-4000. And again, thank you for your time, and Mayor, thank you for giving me the opportunity to give a legislative update tonight.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we have a presentation of a proclamation to Malia Carey, Government and Public Affairs Manager of Second Harvest Food Bank of Orange County in recognition of Hunger Action Month. And if I could have Ms. Carey come up? Hunger Action Month is a national effort to raise awareness of the levels of food and nutritional insecurity in our communities and to inspire the public to take action. High food prices, record-setting inflation, and the sunsetting of pandemic-era food benefit allotments have left many of our neighbors to deal with food and nutritional insecurity on a regular basis. So many Orange County working poor families are still struggling to put food on the table. And with that, I would like to present this proclamation to Malia Carey.
Good evening. As mentioned, my name is Malia Carey, and I work for Second Harvest Food Bank of Orange County. I'm actually here on behalf of the Orange County Hunger Alliance, which is an alliance of eight anti-hunger organizations throughout the county, including both food banks, Meals on Wheels, 211, United Way, and others, and we work together collectively to end hunger in Orange County, really. September is our biggest awareness month of food insecurity and hunger issues, Hunger Action Month, and so we go around to all 34 cities in Orange County, actually, and accept proclamations. So we are thankful for the mayor's support, council's support, the city of Los Alamos. We really appreciate all of your support, spreading awareness that this is still an issue. As far as we're concerned, the food crisis, the hunger crisis is not over. So if you guys, I know September is almost over, but, you know, you don't have to get involved during the month of September only, but you can go to our website, feedoc.org/hungeractionmonth, and you can find out ways to get involved, come volunteer with us, help us spread awareness online, and there's other ways you can get involved as well. Thank you so much. We appreciate, appreciate your support.
Okay, at this time, I'll invite Chief Claiborne, who is going to be making a presentation honoring the late Phil McElroy, retired reserve captain.
Okay. Thank you. I'm here tonight to do a presentation to Mr. Phil in recognition of Mr. Phil McElroy. I'll try to make my way through. This is rough, even though you don't get a chance to meet somebody, if you've had the opportunity to attend an event for somebody who does what you do for your organization, you get a chance to really get an idea of who they were. And so even though I never had the honor of meeting him, as I'll talk about in a minute, I think I got a really good idea about who he was as a person. So I worked with his son to create a bio that I wanted to read to everybody before I get into my presentation. Phil, also known as Mac, was a man who embodied strength, dedication, and the boundless love for family. Phil lived a remarkable 81 years, leaving an unforgettable imprint on everyone who knew him. Phil family was Phil's guiding principle. Alongside his brother Glenn, they built a successful empire, pick apart, which is a testament to their unwavering bond. Yet this great, with yet his greatest pride lay in his children, Kim and Curtis, and his cherished grandchildren, Johnny, Hannah, Chloe, and Allison. Phil was a pillar of support, a source of wisdom, and the architect of countless cherished memories, especially those legendary homemade taco nights. Beyond the family table, Phil dedicated himself to serving his community. For over 20 years, he was a celebrated reserve police officer for the Los Alamos Police Department. His commitment to justice and his unwavering courage made a difference in the lives of countless people. Many years ago, Phil took his daughter on a ride-along and shared the following story. He was working patrol and came across an elderly man swerving in the road. He pulled him over only to discover he was not drunk, but had a hard time seeing at night. Phil kindly drove the gentleman home in the police car and called his own tow company to tow the man's car home, free of charge. Phil made it a point to visit the same elderly man from time to time to check in on him. Phil lived his life on his terms with a quiet strength and a wry sense of humor. He was not afraid to challenge the status quo, always striving to make things better for those around him. He was, in many ways, the last cowboy of a bygone era, a man of integrity, resilience, and a spirit that never wavered. Phil will be missed by many, but we find solace in the immense legacy he leaves behind. Phil taught us the importance of family, the value of hard work, and the unwavering pursuit of justice. Now, I had the honor of attending Phil's celebration of life, which, by the way, was a beautiful ceremony, and being there gave me the opportunity to meet a bunch of the retirees who had left this organization before I ever got here. And in doing so, they all came forward and shared stories, some about Phil and some not, some of them that might include where there are bullet holes in the building. I won't share those stories with my boss here, but it's nice understanding the story behind why they're there. So the irony in all of this, if I can be, you know, quite honest, is that I and we all will be in this situation one day where we won't be here and our kids will be. And that kind of resonates, right, with how I can honor Phil or Mac and what can I do, right? So I can provide you with patches and coins and things that I have here as part of the department, but when I sit and I think about what I do and what Phil did, it reminds me of the day that we take that oath, the day that we get sworn in, and what happens on that day is what they pin upon your chest, and that is this badge. We work, we grew up as kids, we strive to be a police officer, and once they put that badge on your chest, that's when you'll know you've achieved that goal. And so I thought to myself, you know, knowing that his son did not, or that the family did not have his badge, I thought that would be a great way to honor him, but not realizing the challenge of knowing that the badges from that era may not be able to be recreated today. So I'm going to be quite honest with you, I was really worried when I came up with the idea and even planted that seed with you about making that come to fruition. But some things are fortuitous, and they're meant to be. So I come back to the police department, and I start looking around, and I find out that we have some old badges in the PD, and low and behold, I find one from that era. And for those of you who don't know, Phil was a reserve captain with the police department, and the badge that I find that is from that era is also a captain's badge. And so all I had to do was have the ribbon changed to his badge number to be able to have a badge that I have here today that has his badge number on it. So if I could have the family come forward, we would like to present you with that badge today. You can have as few or as many as you want to come forward. We'll take a picture with the family together if you'd like. Just go ahead and step up here. Just go ahead and step up here. Sorry, I almost forgot one thing. Senator Janet Winn was not able to stay, but her office wanted to present a certificate of recognition and memoriam for your father. So, I'll present that to you as well.
Okay, the last presentation of the evening is for our Business Spotlight program. And for this, I would ask Ms. Jenny Ferguson to come forward. So, the Business Spotlight program is a free business recognition program designed to create awareness about the variety of local businesses located in Los Alamos. The Business Spotlight program is a great way for the city to say thank you, showcase great businesses in Los Alamos, and also provide another tool to help our businesses grow. This month's recognized business is the Water Safe Swim School, and Ms. Jenny Ferguson is the owner. Jenny Ferguson is the founder of Water Safe Swim School, known for its high-quality swim lessons and strong community reputation. Alongside her daughter Karen... Okay, Flahive Nance, she developed the award-winning Smart Fish curriculum in nineteen seventy-one. That's a long time ago. Which was taught, which has taught survival skills and advanced techniques to thousands of students from infants to adults. The school employs carefully selected and trained instructors certified through the Smart Fish Academy. It emphasizes a personalized approach to meet each child's unique needs. The Smart Fish method evolves with the latest research, ensuring students master essential skills that lead to successful swimming techniques used by champions. Jenny's commitment to fostering a safe, loving environment has made Water Safe Swim Schools a cornerstone of the community, inspiring generations to embrace the vital skill of swimming. And at this time, if you'd like to say a few words?
Eleven years ago, I was in this room, the last time I was here. And we were applying for a conditional use permit, and we had to apply twice. And we almost didn't get it. And the community showed up, the ones who had attended my school, both in Seal Beach and in Los Alamos, came and spoke for us and essentially demanded that the city give us that conditional use permit. I am so grateful that Los Alamos did that. It is now our flagship school. It will be Water Safe Swim School forever. When I retire, I'm passing it on to our CEO and COO, who will purchase it, perhaps with the employees' help, and they will continue running it. It will be our best school, and I'm proud that it's in Los Al.
Welcome to Water Safe Swim School, the premier destination in Los Alamos for essential swimming lessons tailored for all ages. Their instructors are carefully selected, trained, and certified by the prestigious Smart Fish Academy. At Water Safe, they believe every student is unique. That's why their dedicated instructors personalize their teaching methods to accommodate each individual's specific needs and abilities. For more information, visit them at thirty-six eighty-six West Río Del Abuelo, Los Alamos, or explore their offerings online at wwwwatersafe.com.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to present this certificate to you. And I can tell when I visited the location to interview her, she was very passionate about it. And I think one of the things that she was most proud of, she's taught generational. Yeah, I wasn't born when you started this school. And she mentioned that she taught, you know, she's taught, you know, parents and then grandkids. And it just goes on and on, and several of the high school kids now teach there. So, we're glad that you're here. Thank you very much for being here. I'm going to present that to you.
Okay, next we have oral communications. At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item with the subject matter within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes per speaker. I have two cards. First, we have Teddy Lloyd.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and then council ladies. Thank you very much. My name is Teddy Lloyd. I live in Zeritos, very, very close to Los Alamos. And I know Laurel Park very well because I always drive by and then... But just recently, I saw a sign place up there saying that the Laurel Parks will be rebuilding or renovating the tennis courts. And in there, I noticed the diagram shows that three tennis courts will be resurfaced, but one will be converted for pickleball. Great. Excellent. I love that. Well, but looking at it, and I noticed the diagram shows only two courts. And I strongly feel that because of the, you know, the sport of pickleball, it's growing. I call it exploding. And then, I highly would like to know if the diagram is correct or incorrect. And I'm hoping that the city of Los Alamos would, instead of making two, make it four, because the marginal cost is almost very, very little. And then, there are other examples that I can certainly show that to the city of Los Alamos. All you have to do, just go to City of La Palma and then others nearby cities, City of Long Beach. And then furthermore, I myself got interested in pickleball simply because it is the fastest-growing sport. And then, every time I go, places packed. And if you notice that, if you were to go, you will notice that the... All of a sudden, pickleball comes in and then the court, and then you will see sets of paddles waiting to get in. So, because of that and because of the future growth of pickleball, I would say it's gonna be explosion, okay? Quote-unquote. And then, it's a very, very happy and very, very healthy explosion as well. And so, that being the case, I like to simply ask the city of Los Alamos, is it true, is it not true, that Laurel Park, that one tennis court will be converted into two, or that's merely a diagram? And I'm hoping that is the case. And then furthermore, I would also like to suggest, because of the sport is growing so much in many places, I've been to so many tennis courts, they got... And for example, if you were to go to Seal Beach Tennis Pickleball Center, I was there even yesterday morning. And then, the pickleball courts, they took four tennis courts, converted into sixteen pickleball courts. Yesterday morning, I went there, guess what? All sixteen courts are packed. Then I looked over to look at the tennis courts, I saw only one court being occupied. And that's not just yesterday. Every time I go, I notice that. So, therefore, I strongly hope I can help the city of Los Alamos that, if possible, to make it four, if not eight. I know eight... By the way, I come from... I went to UCLA School of Business, okay? So, I know the business side of it. The marginal cost is so minimal, especially going to do it now, and then so that you can actually convert one tennis court into four. And then, there's so many ideas. I'll be more than happy to assist and help the city of Los Alamos to know what to do and all that. So, I'm hoping that the city council will hopefully listen to my suggestion. It's not crazy. It's just an idea. And I'm definitely, I can bet you my last dime in my pocket, if I get the pickleball players here, I'll bet you every one of them will agree with me. So, any case, nearby, I know, at first I thought Rossmore is part of Los Alamos. And then, the Rossmore Park got four tennis courts, one converted into all four. And you should see how crowded that is. And that happened only within the last couple of months. So, even nearby, and I'm very, very happy Laurel Park is gonna go through renovation, and I'm hoping everything will be great. Thank you very much and good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our second speaker, we have Barbara McGuire.
Good evening. My name is Barbara McGuire, and I'm a member of the board of the Precious Life Shelter here in Los Alamos. And on behalf of our board, I wanted to share with you that our board chair and Los Alamos resident Wendy Gross is being honored this week by United Healthcare. This is in recognition of her outstanding contributions to individual and community health initiatives. As a recipient of the Sage Award, Wendy is only one of twenty-five medical providers nationwide to receive this distinction for her clinical professionalism and for her passion of helping others in our community, especially our clients and children at Precious Life Shelter. Precious Life Shelter is very honored to have Wendy Gross, who is a Sage Award winner, on our board, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? If you want to come forward?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members and residents of this beautiful city of Los Alamos. My name is Alara Upchin, and I am here because my best friend and my savior, Jesus Christ, told me to come here and let you know that somebody is praying for you. And with that, I'd like to take just one quick moment to pray for all of you and your families. Our heavenly Father, thank you so much for giving me a voice and giving me the opportunity to come here and pray for all these beautiful people who are meant to lead this city and also the people in this room who reside here. I pray, Father, that you would protect them, touch their hearts if you haven't done so already, even if they're not saved. Let them know that there's someone praying for them as they're dealing with the difficulties of leading, when they're trying to solve problems of crime and drug issues and poverty and all the other things that might be happening in their lives. Protect them and their families, Lord God. And I pray that you would always touch their hearts with your wisdom and give them the opportunity to come to you when they're having a hard time. And please, Father, that let them know that they're not alone and we're just a prayer away. So, it's okay to ask for prayers. It's okay to reach for this to their local churches. And I pray, Father, that you would also give them the wisdom to protect the voiceless, including our unborn. I ask these things in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Ray Joseph. I'm a Los Alamos resident, and I come here today to respond to a request for information that I received from the city, a couple of city officials on September twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Before I respond to that request, though, I want to provide a little background information. So, my family and I moved to Los Alamos in twenty eighteen from Greenwich, Connecticut. I'm a financial services executive. My son attends Los Alamos High School. My wife stays home with him. I volunteer in the community. I'm a member of the Los Alamos South Board. I'm also, have been appointed by this commission to be on the, I'm sorry, this council, to be part of the Parks and Recreation Commission, I believe that's the correct name. And I'm also a member of Compass Bible Church. Unfortunately for me, I encountered a situation where a couple of police officers addressed me at six-thirty-seven AM and asked for what I was doing in front of my home on that day. And unfortunately for me, I was on the phone, because I do this quite frequently. I spend a lot of my time talking to folks in New York, Chicago, as a financial services executive on the west coast. I'm sure you understand, we spend a lot of time talking to folks in different locations. Now, I come from a background that respects public service. My sister works for the district attorney's office in upstate New York. My mother was a U.S. Air Force captain, was killed on active duty, who designed radar systems and had top secret security clearance. I myself have worked for several entities. I was appointed by the governor of the state of New Jersey, John Corzine, former chairman of Goldman Sachs, to run the state of New Jersey's pension fund, which is a hundred-billion-dollar pension fund. I received a presidential appointment by President Obama where I oversaw the American Indian Trust Funds, which is a fifty-six-million-acre property, as well as five billion dollars in assets. And most recently, I served as the chief investment officer for the city of Los Angeles's Firemen's and Police Officers Pension Fund. So, I have a great deal of respect for police officers and the nature of the work that they do. When I was encountered by this action, I was quite disturbed. I was on the phone. Two officers came up to me, asked me what I was doing ten feet from my car, twenty feet from my home where my wife and son were sleeping. When that officer placed his hand on his firearm and asked me to defend who I was, I merely raised my hands, invoked my Fifth Amendment right, asked to speak to my attorney, John Sweeney, and I was denied that right. So, at this point, I'm asking for a couple of things. First, I would like my name removed from that police report. I have done nothing wrong. I continue to work in this city and live in this city. I have no outstanding warrants and no background here whatsoever. I do plan to, at this point, my wife and son have decided we should be looking to leave the city. We've recently sold our home in Connecticut, and I am looking to find a better environment for my family. I'm not questioning your motives. I'm not questioning what you do. All I'm trying to do is protect myself, because now I have to address this police report when it comes up in background checks. So, I need this matter addressed. So, I'm requesting your assistance and continuing to just operate in the city as best I can. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers in the audience?
So, I feel like I have to give a little background. So, my name is Laura Tanner, and I teach a biblical citizenship class at Calvary Chapel of the Harbor. And I've been leading this, and in the course, it's about doing your civic duty, doing what you can do to help in the way you think you should help. And in leading that course, I keep encouraging people. Oh, I had attended a council meeting in Huntington Beach, and the council was trying to take away the power of prayer. They were trying to take away the invocation, to go into a moment of silence. There was people there for and against, but I watched this man, and I was just so impressed. He said, "You can take away the invocation. You can take away the moment of prayer. You can change your counsel." But what you can't take away is your three minutes in every single public meeting to speak. And if you can speak, you can pray. So, I've been encouraging my class to go and do that, and I thought, well, I'm a bit of a hypocrite because I haven't done it yet. So, I'm very happy that Alora, she did it before me. She's one of the students in my classes. And it's like, it's so inspirational, and to have the knowledge that we know we can pray anywhere, anytime in a public meeting is a blessing in America that not a lot of other countries have. So, here goes. So, my name is Laura Tanner. I am a Christian, American conservative, in that order. I'm a Christian because I have asked Jesus to be my Lord and Savior of my life and direct my steps according to the principles established in His Word. I'm American because I am blessed to be a citizen of this amazing country whose constitution guarantees its citizens the right of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. I am a conservative because I believe the principles set forth in the Constitution should be adhered to since it's those principles that made this country great. The First Amendment states, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or the press, or the right of the people to peacefully assemble..." or the press, or the right of the people to peacefully assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances," which the man just did, which I think is amazing that we have that ability. No one's gonna go to his house and arrest him tonight, which they would do in other countries. He came up here, he was able to speak. God bless him in this country. So tonight, I'm here to exercise the right of free speech, to pray for all of Los Alamos City Council and the other people in leadership here. So dear Jesus, please guide and direct this leadership in all of its decisions. Remind them that one day they will make an answer to you for every decision they make and will be rewarded accordingly. May their decisions be just, merciful, and bring glory to you. May you bind any and all spiritual influences that are not from you. It's in your precious name we pray. Pray amen.
Thank, thank you very much. Do I have any other speakers tonight? No? Okay, we will move on. And just so you know, if you're in the audience, if, if you don't want to stick around and listen to the rest of us, we will not be offended. I know you probably have places to go and people to see, maybe a football game to watch or something like that, but yeah. Take care. Okay, right now, we have updates from the mayor. City of Los Alamos Recre- oh, trunk or treat. City of Los Alamos Recreation and Community Services Department, 13th Annual Memorial Care Miller Children's and Women's Hospital Long Beach Trunk or Treat presented by Southland Credit Union. The free event will take place on Saturday, October 26th, 2024, from 5:00 PM to 7:30 PM at Little Cottonwood Park. This spooktacular event provides a safe space for families to celebrate Halloween. Guests will have the opportunity to participate in the children's costume contests, pick their very own pumpkin from the free pumpkin patch sponsored by Southland Credit Union, play carnival games, win prizes, visit Trunks for Candy, shop at vendor booths, jump on moon bounces, ride the spooky train, enjoy the sensory activity area, purchase adult beverages from the beverage garden benefiting the Los Alamos Community Foundation, and more. Families are encouraged to come dressed in their Halloween costumes to enter the ever-so-popular costume contest. Thank you to our event sponsors, Memorial Care Miller Children's and Women's Hospital Long Beach as the title sponsor, Southland Credit Union as the presenting sponsor, and Wilden Group, Inc., and Grocery Outlet Long Beach Wardlow as gold sponsors. Next, we have the Los Alamos Community Center Grand Reopening. You and your family are invited to attend the grand reopening of our City of Los Alamos Community Center located at 10911 Oak Street in Los Alamos. Please join us on Friday, October 4th, from 5:30 PM to 8:00 PM for our grand reopening and ribbon cutting ceremony beginning at 5:30. Come dressed up in cocktail attire, tour our open house, and celebrate with us. This event is free and includes appetizers, first come, first serve, DJ and, a DJ and dancing. Additional parking will be available at the Oak Middle School parking lot. We proudly rededicate this facility as a testament to the collective efforts, vision, and generosity of this great community. May the community center continue to be a place to gather, learn, grow, and celebrate. This project was made possible through the dedicate, through the dedicated work and financial support of State Senator Janet Winn. And then finally, Nights on Pine, held on the third Saturday of the month, with the next one scheduled for Saturday, October 19th, from 4:00 to 9:00 PM. Come out and have some fun with food, entertainment, vendors, and activities for the kids. That concludes the mayor's updates. Do we have any updates from the city staff?
I have a few, sir. Actually, I'd like to hand it over to the chief. He's gonna tease the presentation for the next council meeting, I believe.
Yes, so next council meeting, we will be having Sergeant Nestor Rodriguez come up and do a presentation on an update for the K-9 program. And we're trying to get him in by this meeting, but they just weren't able to do it because they're actually working on a very robust presentation that's gonna include some body worn camera footage from a neighboring city of Elvis in Action. So don't miss the next council meeting.
Also, Director Emily Noda has some updates on upcoming events.
Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. I actually have a recap of Celebrate Los Al. So if you could bear with me, it was a jam packed day, very successful, but it's a little bit lengthy because there was so much that happened. On Saturday, September 14th, over 100 volunteers gathered to participate in the 7th Annual Serve Los Al Event as part of Celebrate Los Al. It was a successful morning as volunteers came together for an assembly at 8:30 AM at the Oak Middle School Outdoor Amphitheater. At the assembly, local elected officials addressed the volunteers. Thanks to the city council for supporting the event and city manager Chet Simmons and administrative manager Chelsea Wilson for coming out to serve Los Al. Sunburst Youth Academy was present with 50 of their cadets to help our community volunteers. Recreation coordinator Angel Hernandez took the lead on organizing the event. Projects included Coyote Creek Cleanup, Laurel Park Cleanup, Little Oak Preschool Patio Cleanup and Planting Project, Little Cottonwood Park Cleanup, Precious Life Shelter Thrift and Gift Shop Sorting, Senior Resident Landscape Project, Royal Oak Mobile Home Window Washing, Los Alamos Cypress and Seal Beach Rotary Club Suitcase Project, Transitions in Motherhood and We Care Hygiene Kits, St. Isador Historical Plaza Cleaning Project, and Listonic Free Health Clinic Vision and Glasses. Thank you to all who participated and displayed great pride and dedication to volunteering at Serve Los Al. On the same day, at 4 o'clock, we began Celebrate Los Al Street Fair, which opened with the band Headshine with information and merchandise vendors along Pine Street, the Public Safety Fair coordinated by Training Events and VIPS Coordinator Nicole Sees from the Los Alamos Police Department, Pine Streets, a grant funded program that featured an incredible food tasting of 15 participating Los Alamos restaurants coordinated by Economic Development Supervisor Alicia Booth from the Development Services Department, the Los Al Carnival with our very own zip line down Pine Street. That was new and very popular. The Veterans Recognition Ceremony, which was held at the stage to honor our Los Alamos veterans by local elected officials and their reps, present along with the entire city council to honor our veterans, including our chief, Michael Claiborne, and our mayor. The night closed out with a performance by J.T. Harker at 7:00 PM and the Glow Run kicking off at 7:30. The Glow Run had 800 participants, which was record setting for this event. From the Recreation and Community Services Department, Recreation Manager Jason Bruton, Recreation Supervisor Tin Vila Luna, Recreation Coordinator Alex Anderson led the street fair, Glow Run, and Carnival. And Recreation Supervisor Steve Kim coordinated the veterans' recognition. Thanks to the 7,500 community members for helping us celebrate this wonderful event, this is an award winning event demonstrating successful collaboration among city departments, the business community, local nonprofits with Serve Los Al, and community members, including the Los Alamos Unified School District, for coming together to celebrate our wonderful city. And my next upcoming event, you don't want to miss, is Elevate Women's Conference. This is Wednesday, October 9th. We have our sponsors Memorial Care Long Beach Medical Center, Sir Speedy of Los Alamos, and Printmasters. The event is taking place at our beautiful renovated community center. And at this conference, participants will learn concepts that can help them to achieve their best self, both personally and professionally. They will have the opportunity to meet other local women who have the same mindset and are committed to growing. There is still registration available and there will be no registration at the door, so please register early and soon by visiting LosAlRecreationMyRec.com. Or you can contact us at the Recreation Department. Thank you.
I'd also like to have Director Noda give a presentation on some of the happenings in development services.
All right. Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. Couple updates here. Number one, I want to talk about our Economic Development Revive Program. It's a very popular program. Just to remind you that Revive Program is an exterior facade improvement program for commercial and nonprofit businesses in the community. And so if you recall that we went out for round one, city council allocated funds for it, and then we quickly sold out because you can get, the city will match 50% of the funds to improve your exterior, up to $10,000. So we quickly had 10 businesses come in to get that. And then we came back to council for a second round. And so I would tell you right now that we're completely full. We have 20 businesses that are in the running. I believe eight of them have already completed their work with 12 pending. I'm not gonna go over every single business that we have listed here, but some of them are staples in the city like Wahoo Fish Taco. They did paint landscaping, sign maintenance, Premier Dance Art Studio, they added additional signage. We have St. Isador Historical Plaza, that's gonna do a window and fix their outdoor exterior pergola. We even have the American Legion that's doing, they're gonna do stucco work and then they're gonna paint a mural on the outside. So again, very popular program. We're excited that we were able to assist again, these nonprofits and these businesses to make Los Alamos a great city to live, work, and play. The next thing I want to update the city council and members of the public tuning in tonight is we have a lot of projects going on in the city. And so bear with me, I'm gonna start with our park project. Sterns Park Project, if you recall council, we were slated to begin a few months ago, but then we had a, we got contacted by Wildlife Fishing Game because we had an endangered bird, specifically a hawk nesting at the site. So we had to be patient as the hawk was raising their family. And now that the baby hawks can fly, we have given the green light to proceed with the construction of that. So they had actually started today. And so again, for next few months, it is slated to be done by the end of December of this year of 2024. Again, the park will bring in a fully ADA compliant, accessible park to that neighborhood. So stay tuned, we will be doing a ribbon cutting sometime in December for that. The next park there is Labyrinth Park. Tonight, one of the consent item calendar is to go out to RFP for construction. And we are slated to begin construction in November of this year, and that will be completed in April 2025. So Labyrinth Park is again, a complete makeover, ADA compliance, new play shelter, play equipment, I'm sorry, new shelter and just new landscaping. We're refreshing that park. And the third one that hopefully will be coming up soon is Ser Optimus Park, that's located in the neighborhood of Old Town West. We'll be using park Prop 68 funds to redo that park. Again, it's pour in place rubber surfacing, new play equipment. We're actually going to the Parks Recreation Culture Art Commission in a couple of weeks. I can't remember the date, but in October, to have them choose the play equipment as we get ready for those three parks. Other stuff that's going on in the city, the big one that I want to start off with is our $2 million street project that we're gonna go. It's a citywide street project that's going into the residential area. There's gonna be concrete work, of course, which is curb gutter sidewalk, street grind and overlay, and of course, slurry sealing and paint marking. That is slated, we actually have the pre-con meeting tomorrow, and that's slated to begin at the end of October and go through December, weather permitting. Again, this is a part of the city council's ongoing commitment to the pavement management plan. This is, will be the, I believe, the third year we're doing that. So again, this was a big one. This is $2 million. Other projects that we're doing here is the Los Al Striping Project. It actually will, it started yesterday. And again, you'll see work begin tonight. It's a duration of 15 days, will be done in a couple of weeks. This is part of the active transportation plan that will make Los Alamos Boulevard, the segment is from Cotella to what I call the bridge that's past the high school a little bit, past Cerritos a little bit. We will install again, new striping pedestrian, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, not bicycle lanes. And just again, make the street, which is portions of it is in our town center, more walkable, safer for pedestrians and bicyclists, and of course, vehicles. We're getting ready to do the Lexington Striping. This is a segment from Farquhar to Cotella Avenue. This will involve a little portion of assisting the base in striping in front of their guard shack, again, to help with ingress and egress out of that military base. Again, this will add additional parking to Lexington and of course, eliminate some difficult sightlines and some difficult spots, and of course, slow down traffic in that area. And a couple ones that are exterior, but you'll see them around here. The big one, if you drive into Los Alamos Cerritos Boulevard, is the LA Sand Project. It's actually a Long Beach project, but portion of that is coming into Los Alamos. It's been going on for the last several weeks. It started actually before summer. It was scheduled to be done by now, but we just got notified that it's an additional six weeks of work. So again, if you come into Los Alamos on Cerritos, for the next six weeks, try to find alternate ways to get in because it is impacted. They basically make the lanes into one lane in, going both ways. Another one that's coming up that's gonna really, really impact traffic as well is a Southern California Edison SCE Vault Project. This will be located on Los Alamos Boulevard and Green Street. They're putting in a very large underground vault. And in that section right there, it's three lanes on Los Alamos Boulevard. For four weeks, it's gonna go down to one lane with 24 hour traffic control. And so we tried our very best to talk to Southern California Edison to see if they could at least delay it till summer, but they say that this is a very, very urgent work. So we had to decide to, you know, give them the green light because we did not want a lot of our residents to have a loss of power. So again, this will affect traffic tremendously. It is scheduled for four weeks. I'm, we, the team here is pushing to get them done as soon as possible. But again, message boards will be going up in a few days to alert the public. We will be doing our noticing as well. But this will extremely, extremely impact traffic coming down that. Again, one lane, 24 hours a day for approximately four weeks. Again, like I said, we have a lot going on. I encourage anyone in the community to stay in touch with the city, whether it's through social media, our weekly e-newsletter, or our website, because a lot of it is detailed on there about the projects, on the timeline, description, contact information, et cetera. So again, stay connected with the city as best you can. Thank you.
Sir, I just have one more. And I can see you all kind of looking at me and wondering how we're paying for all this, so I figured I'd probably try to give you an answer. We actually hit a, an important milestone, I think, today. We actually received word that we have been awarded another grant. That puts our total for the last 18 months to about $11 million in grant funding that we've been able to secure. I did want to point out that this has been a collaborative effort. The entire staff, everyone from Craig all the way down to Matt, really tracking and making sure that we get these things put in on time and looking for every little pot of money that we can find. I'd like to list just a couple of the highlights that really come to mind. Obviously, we all remember the 2.5 million that Janet Winn was able to get into the, into the state budget with the help of Councilwoman, Councilwoman Dobie. That obviously has allowed us to do a multimillion dollar project with the city only putting in a fraction of that cost. Also, the $580,000 that we're getting for Bloomfield that the mayor was able to see across the line after having help from the council, which will always improve the access to the actual school that's there by creating crosswalks and safe pathways to school. We also are helping out our local agencies that are in support of us. Mayor Pro Tem Hasselbrink was able to get a million dollars into the federal budget in order to see some of the improvements done at the fire station here in town. One of the big ones that just came across is $5 million that we were awarded in order to redo all of Pine Street, which obviously is a big commitment for us to really take on and to be able to do it right and to have somebody else foot that bill for us. Probably another one that is incredibly important to us is today, we just received word that through SCAG and OCTA, we were awarded an additional $1.9 million for our Project V. So again, Councilmember Dobie, thank you for your help with that one. Again, like I said, this is a collaborative effort. A lot of time goes into not only getting these funds, but then tracking them and making sure that they're expended correctly. And so I just want to take my hat off to Craig and to the rest of the team in finance for making sure that all of our numbers have always matched up, and that's why these agencies are still willing to continuously give us money for the ideas that they come up with. And with that, mayor, that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'd also like to extend my thanks to you and the staff. So great work. Now we have our warrants, just for the public's knowledge, that we do have an accelerated warrants policy where the council receives the warrants and we ask questions in advance. Hopefully, they're Hopefully their responses are given prior to the meeting, but if not, any further questions or responses will be addressed appropriately by the staff. So with that.
I have a question. It's for the city attorney, actually. Is it, is okay to discuss the warrants at this time?
Is it okay to discuss the warrant? It's an agendized item for the council's consideration at this time, yes.
Okay, thanks. I wanted to ask that question. We created the accelerated warrants policy, and I think unintentionally it's caused, it discourages public discussion. So I wanted to make sure, just start with that. I've got a few questions, they're softball questions, but I would like to ask some questions. I have a few questions for the city attorney, then I think like three for you, Chet, really basic ones about the warrants. But I'm getting, I've been getting a lot of feedback, knocking doors, talking to people, they're watching our meetings, and they're asking like, why, why does this one get cut off so quickly? So I just have a few questions. From a legal perspective, like as council, can you talk about, for our Channel 3 viewers, can you talk about like what's council's role when it comes to financial oversight?
Well, I think the point of departure in this response is that the council has been acting in accordance with the council adopted policy with how the council as a body wishes to handle the warrants. So that's, that's why there's this process put in place that allows questions to be asked in advanced and so forth, so that you have the information you need to pass upon the warrants when they come before the council. So that's, I guess would be my answer as to why it's being treated the way it is, that the council is acting in accordance with the policy that it adopted.
And are you, I apologize, I don't know this. Are you a city attorney for other cities?
I, I'm a city attorney for the city of Los Alamos and then serve as assistant city attorney for the city of Tustin, and then also do work for other cities including Laguna Hills, Ransville, Santa Margarita, and then general counsel, or assistant general counsel work for the Orange County Fire Authority.
Wonderful. So much more knowledgeable than me, you're very familiar with this. At other cities, is there, is there a big difference between what information is provided to council members? Or is it city by city, policy by policy? Like, we're elected by the people to provide financial oversight. If, to what degree am I responsible for that, like as an elected?
I think, I think you're responsible for looking at the warrants register that's provided at the council meeting and voting on whether or not you'd like to move it. I will say, it's been my experience with other cities that there's not typically an extended discussion or desire to, to pull substantial amounts of invoices during that review at council meetings. But each city is going to act according to its own policies in that respect.
Okay, I appreciate that. I think the accelerated warrants is the result of, of me, you know, asking for information. I think that was the result, just, you know, last year we had some issues with the warrants, some inaccuracies, some problems, things like that, where I definitely, I didn't have a lot of trust in the financial reporting. And then when asked for some, what I would consider basic information was, was, you know, wasn't provided. So again, build some mistrust there. What is, can you talk about like the minimum threshold for a council member to fulfill our role as providing financial oversight?
I, I think the city manager may be able to jump in on this, but my understanding is that everything in the warrants report is consistent with a budget that has been reviewed and approved by the city council. So the councils, and again, I'll defer to the city manager on this, but, but the council's obligation and priority with respect to fiscal administration is oversight and review of that budget. The, the warrants report is just showing a monthly outlay of how city staff is acting in accordance with those budget allocations. So there shouldn't be anything in the warrant register that hasn't already been contemplated in terms of authorized funds to be used by staff for these purposes.
Could not have said that better myself.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that. That's clarifying, I appreciate that. Can you talk about Los Al? If we neglect our financial responsibilities, like you said, comparing the budget to, to what we're spending our money on, how could the community potentially negatively be impacted?
I'm, I'm not sure I understand the question, but I do think that we're potentially getting outside of this agenda item at this point. I'm happy to provide the brief responses I have, but the item for consideration at this point is whether or not the council wants to approve the warrant register as presented and with the feedback that was provided pursuant to our policy.
Just the items, okay.
If we're looking to have a larger comprehensive discussion of the city's obligation, the warrant and so forth, there would need to be a separately listed agenda item so that we could have, you know, a more robust exchange and conversation with your colleagues.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you. Have you ever been instructed to not provide financial information to council members? Is that outside?
Question for me?
Yes. If, if it's within the warrants.
I've got a brief response to answer that, is no.
Okay. Thank you. So I've got a couple of questions for, let's see, for Chet. There were... So I took today off of work to go to City Hall to look at some of these. Thank you for pulling them. The one that stood out to me, Trepeby, Smith and Associates?
Yes.
So that one, that was, I had that one, I was looking at that one today. One of the things that stood out to me regarding that one was the, the PO for that one was, was to this agency here. It's for $50,000, I think it was June 27th or something. And then their invoices show that almost every day in July, they, they're working on Measure X, something to do with Measure X, whether it's like drafting ordinances or marketing, or I think like graphic design, photography, door hangers, voiceover scripts, promotional videos, things like that. And I'm curious, like, we knew that the, that the municipal elections are happening in November. Why issue a PO at the end of June and then hammer it? It looked like almost every day they were working on this in July to then bring it to council in August. Why not? Why, why not bring that to council? Why not bring it to the public earlier in the year to bring about more public input? One of the things I'm getting regarding Measure X is why they never heard anything about that. And so when I saw the invoices, I'm just curious why we chose to do that so late in the process?
I believe that the council voted to put the measure on the ballot in, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the city clerk, but I want to say it was June or July. The, it's just that that's when the work needed to be done.
In other words, you wouldn't do that before we passed it?
No.
Correct.
So it was after, okay, thank you. There was also an item in there, and I was wondering if you could speak more to like the definition of this, because I think this is the first time since I've been on council, we've had a no-bid sole source contract for... Vendor Griffin Structures for Program Management Services. Can you talk about what, what that is? The difference between taking it to, taking it out to bid to, you have a certain threshold that you can go as city manager, go and, you know, sign contracts. With this one, is this, this one stood out to me. Can you help me understand why we went with that? Perhaps were there no other options?
There's a, we have the right to do sole sourcing within our purchasing and procurement system. And so this contract and the work that was being done lent itself to that situation, and also the expediency of being able to actually go and do the work and not have to spend eight months getting bids and bringing it before the council. And the fact that the contract fell underneath my authority, I was able to sign it.
And what authority do you have? It's $100,000 or $120,000?
It's $100,000.
$100,000, okay, thank you.
But also during that, I do make notifications to the Budget Standing Committee.
And who serves on the Budget Standing Committee?
Councilmember Dobie and Castle, or Mayor Pro Tem Hasselbrink.
Okay, so like as you sign a contract and then you're discussing it with the Budget Standing Committee, and then it's going to come to council?
That is a way for the projects or for contracts to be approved, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so here's a softball one. What I'd like to do is I'd like to bring a motion before my council, before my colleagues that I think will, I think will have unanimous support. But what I'd like to do is a simple motion, and I'd like to present this motion so that residents can see that there is an attempt at financial transparency. We all have a different personality, we approach it, approach it differently. I'm the newest council member, you know, Shelley's been on here the longest, so we approach this differently. But here's my motion, and like, if one of my colleagues would, would second it. In an effort to show, and I have a, a copy for the city clerk's office, I'll submit, so it's, we have this. In an effort to show the residents of Los Alamos that this council values financial transparency and accountability, I move to direct staff to electronically deliver financial information to council members upon request. Would one of my colleagues like to second that?
Councilmember Hibbert, if I could, that, that's outside the scope of what's listed on the agenda for consideration. What's on the agenda for consideration is whether or not the council wishes to ratify the warrants at this time. What I'm hearing you say could be interpreted instead as a request to place this item on a future agenda for consideration, but we can't just make motions on items that haven't been agendized or listed for consideration by the council.
Okay. Thank you. I would, I'd like to do that. I'd like to make a motion then to place it on the agenda, to discuss it.
Okay, so in accordance with, with the city council's policy for placing items on the agenda, then staff would return at the next council meeting with a succinct staff report that allows the council to disguise, to discuss whether or not they would like a more comprehensive and replete discussion of that item. If the council decides they would like to, then a full staff report would be prepared and then brought back to council for discussion and a vote.
Wonderful.
If I could just check with Madam Clerk, do you have enough information based on the statement that was read into the record there to move forward with that request?
Yes, we would just need a second for that motion.
I'll second.
Just so I'm, just so I'm clear, the, this motion and the second that we have is for placing an item on the agenda? Or what are?
That, that's correct. So under the council's adopted policy, in order for a, a member in a meeting to play, ask to have an item placed on the agenda, to give an indication of an item they'd like to bring back to council, staff will take that request and provide a very cursory staff report or item listing on the next agenda. So then the council will be able to determine whether or not it wants further discussion or consideration of that request. So by design, it's, it's a two-step process, and it's intended to allow members to get items on the agenda, but also to allow the other members to discuss whether or not they want staff resources allocated to that effort before it moves forward. So that, that would be the two-step process.
Okay, so a vote now just puts it on the agenda, just for clarification?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so we have the pending motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Any abstain?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. So the, the motion passes three to one.
Thank you.
Well, I had a couple of questions. I understand from the policy that Wendy just sent earlier, I'm sorry, last week, it helped me remember that I can ask the questions that I've already posed to city staff. I understand that I had requested that, a brief explanation of the purposes of different items that I had questions about for the warrant. I also requested copies of the invoices. And from my understanding, since, since it's not digitized to have copies of invoices presented electronically, and due to the new printing policy, is there a reason why that I wouldn't be able to scan it myself, I mean, or do that? So it's, if it's not digital, it's not printed, why I can't as a council member take the opportunity? Because I think it's really important that if there's questions that a council member who's representing the city has in regards to expenses that are being incurred, that's being used for general funds, that they are able to have access to the invoices. And since I wasn't provided the copies of the invoices, I'm trying to find other methods of having that so I can go ahead and review it.
Let me, let me just, just for the benefit of the people who happen to be watching, if there's anybody out there. The warrants, what we're talking about is basically a snapshot, in this case for the month of August, what the city spends. It's like looking at the checkbook and all the transactions. I mean, I don't know, there's, I'm looking at hundreds of pages of transactions. So the policy that the city, that's in the city council handbook is that if it requires more than three hours worth of staff, I think is my understanding, then the, then the, the invoices and whatever documents do not have to be presented because it takes an enormous amount of staff time. So the public knows, each of us, and even the public, has access to these warrants, can ask questions about the warrants. And if there's particular items that somebody wants to see an invoice, we can request it. It's just that the, if, if that staff hours exceeds three hours, then it becomes an issue because we're putting too much manpower. You know, these, these folks have a city to run, they don't, they don't personally work for us. I just wanted the people to understand, nothing's being withheld, there's no transparency issues, all this is here. If you wanted to see a particular invoice, or if you can minimize your request to under three hours worth of manpower, or woman manpower, whatever we call it these days, then that's fine. So I don't want to get the perception out there that we're hiding anything, that anything's not discoverable. The public can make a request for documents, it's all here.
I think you misunderstood. I was requiring, inquiring if I may actually go in, take my time out of the day.
No, no misunderstanding.
I'm sorry, you interrupted me.
I just want, I know.
I know, but that's pretty, that's pretty rude. I didn't, I didn't interrupt you. I didn't interrupt you. So all I'm asking is to pose, is it possible for a council member to have access to these invoices and take their time out to go ahead and scan it, print it themselves? I can pose that to you, Mr. Dowd?
But before that, there was no misunderstanding. I'm just providing clarification to the public what it is we're actually speaking about.
Yeah, but that's not what I was speaking about, and since I had the floor, I was asking about my question.
That's fine, and, and he's going to answer your question.
And that's what I was posing it to him. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
I would actually pass this one to the city manager because that's a, that's a question in terms of administrative resources on providing the invoices for you to come in and copy.
Okay, thank you.
And actually, I think I can do you one better. So as the council has been informed, we're in the process, like all of the systems here in the city, we have been spending a lot of time actually modernizing all of these systems. You will all remember when you got on council that the city clerk's office actually had a process of our agenda management where it was literally the city clerk emailing different staff members, trying to compile all of the different reports into one place, and then back and forth about different approvals and such. She then took the initiative and actually created an entire workflow system that now produces the agendas that you have in front of you, and also is incredibly more efficient, and is also incredibly, has fewer errors in it, which is always nice because we're not using old copies of agenda items. We have also undertaken this effort in the police department in terms of digitizing a lot of the old records that we have so that we have access to them, so that when we do crime analysis or we have to look up a police report, we have the ability to get them without actually going into boxes and trying to search for different reports. And that makes police work better, more efficient, and allows the chief to get out there and catch more bad guys. We currently are in the process of also doing this with our finance department. We have committed to the city council that by the end of the winter that we would have a fully digitized, I'm sorry, warrant system. Which would allow everybody to, when you ask your questions, we would be able to immediately ship you the invoices that are involved. That will provide you with all of the, hopefully all of the information that you need in order to make your determinations with regards to the different, your votes on the warrant system. But again, it's a system that is not yet in place, but I believe that we will be making a deadline or a push to have it in place in the next month or two. And so that hopefully will negate the need for you to come into City Hall and take a day off of work to sit in the finance director's office for a couple hours. And obviously, we don't want you to waste your time, we don't need you. Craig obviously needs to be working on the things that he's working on, and so this will make it more efficient for everybody. But as I said, it is a process. But as I said, it is a process in order to put one of these things in place. We spent a lot of time testing it to make sure that it's going to work the way that it's advertised, and just from my standpoint to, from an administrative standpoint, it was more important to me personally that the police department was done first.
Understandably.
So, I'm sure I would get no argument out of the council on that one. So, I'm hopeful that this system will solve any of the issues that you've raised here tonight. I think it will, and we will continue after that to continue to find the next thing to modernize in the city. But again, it is a work in progress.
No, thank you, Mr. Simmons. I really appreciate that. You've answered my question. Thank you again.
Of course. Any other questions? Okay.
I'll move the warrants.
Second.
Can I get a roll call?
Mayor Nofolda?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Councilmember Dobie?
Yes.
Councilmember Hibbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Murphy?
Aye.
Okay, we move on to the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item. At this time, does anybody want to pull an item?
I'll move it.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any noes? Any abstentions? The item moves. Okay, at this time, we have the council announcements. Council members may report on any items not specifically described on the agenda that are of interest to the community, provided no action or discussion is taken except to provide staff direction to report back or to place an item on the future, a future agenda. I'm just gonna go to my right, Mayor Protem Hasselbrink?
Pretty busy month. I first attended the senior expo over at the Legion, very, very well-attended. People were very grateful for all the different services in one place, which was also nice. I was able, also able to sign up, I believe, five veterans for the recognition at the Celebrate Los Al, so that was always nice. I attended with Mayor Nofolda the Cal City's OC Division Meeting in Garden Grove, and then I did, Kenny Brandon Mary celebrated his 86th birthday, first at the American Legion, where I was able to get a few more veterans, because I hear that's what they do over there. And then it transferred into the second day of his birthday celebration at the Casa U Shelter Poker Tournament. That's always a great event held at Judy Copolo's house. The food is also amazing, and just seeing a lot of old friends was really nice. I attended the Celebrate Los Al with the Veterans Recognition, which was really good. It was a much better turnout than last year, and hopefully growing every year as we recognize these wonderful veterans. I do wanna call out Daniel Pats, who has never been able to be recognized as a veteran because he served his country, which was the country of South Africa, and so this was the first time that he was able to be recognized as a veteran. So, I was, it was nice to see him. He was very, very touched by that. In walking around Celebrate Los Al, we had a lot of really happy residents, just enjoying the music, enjoying just the camaraderie, and just the small-town atmosphere that we've been working so hard to do. Pine Streets was, Pine, Pine Streets eats, yes, the food stuff. That was really good. Couple of our new restaurants were out there, their lines were long, they were giving out lots of samples, and hopefully will return to their places of business and eat there again. Attended the Heroes Appreciation Lunch, put on by the Los Al Chamber. That was incredible. I had the honor to give out the city accommodations to all these heroes and hear from each one of them, whether it be military, or fire, or police. We even had the facilities director from the UCI Medical Center down the street here, and all the stuff that he does behind the scenes to keep that hospital safe. I also wanted to tout the Los Al app again. Last Thursday, a resident had told me about a severe electrical pole on Bloomfield and Green that was split, and it looked like just the wires were holding up the pole. I don't know who to contact in the dark hole of Southern California Edison. So, Thursday night, I walked through the resident how to report this on the Los Al app, and by Friday, we had a response, and today, I saw Edison walking around that area taking pictures of poles, not just the one, but many. So, that did much more than I ever exceeded to do, so that Los Al app is working really good, 24/7. And then I just wanted to give a recap on a couple of things with OCFA. First, the status of the airport fire. This fire started on September 9th, 14 days ago. It is currently, thankfully, 81% contained. They're still putting out some smolderings. They had 23,519 acres burned. There were 20,780 structures threatened, 150 structures were damaged or destroyed. Shout-out to our chief Covey, which is why he's not here. He was the operations section chief for the entire incident, which means any logistical manpower or vehicles or equipment went through him, and he is now off of that, and he's now helping out with the other incident that I'm sure many people heard about. Last Thursday, one of our three hand crews was heading home after eight straight 12-hour shifts on the 241 toll road. There was a ladder in the middle of the toll road, and the driver swerved to avoid it, he hit a guard rail, and the, they call it the buggy, did multiple turnovers. There were eight firefighters in the buggy, all were taken to various hospitals, with some being airlifted. As of today, four are now home recovering. There are four still remaining in various hospitals. Two of them could be released in the next couple of weeks, the other two have an extremely long road ahead of them. Chief Covey has now taken over kind of care of the families, making sure they have the information, making sure that they have what they need as they kind of wander into their new normal. Our hand crew guys, those are kind of the entry-level guys, they're the ones with the axes and the hose, and they're, they're cutting away all the brush to make a fire line. These guys are tough guys, and I just wanna keep all eight of them in our prayers. I think it's a, it's a big deal, and that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Murphy?
Okay, so I've attended a few, a lot, well, quite a few events in the last month. I attended Representative Steele's Seniors of Distinction Award Ceremony, where we honored Manny, or Emmanuel Galvin, just an awesome person, and we honored him for his outstanding dedication, his kindness, and just his impact on our city. I attended the Casa U Shelter's Texan Hold'em Tournament, who I called the Dazzling Duo, with Judy and Karen of Green Street Interiors. I also had the privilege of attending the Women of Character Award Ceremony, where they honored amazing women such as council members Janice Lim and also Rhonda Shader for their dedication to their communities. I also, which I usually do annually, is I volunteered for serve Los Al, and I usually choose Precious Life Shelter's thrift shop. As Emma knows, I like to organize and put all the clothes together. It's just one of the things I've always loved to do. I love organization. After that, I also headed to Pine Street, where we honored several, several veterans for their service to the country. That was amazing. I also had the honor of attending the annual Heroes Luncheon at Rush Park last week, where we recognized several first responders, military members, police officers. I even say, you know, should have honored my husband, which I honored him, you know, as a peace officer. He comes home, he works six days a week, working with a lot of juvenile males, and it can be very challenging. He tries to hold it in, and I can understand how it's, it's a lot, it's what they do. So, I just wanna say thank you for all that you do out there, because I know it's tremendous, emotionally, physically. And I just wanna say thank you to Toni. She did an amazing job of organizing the event. It was a packed house. I also headed, Saturday was pretty busy for me. I attended back-to-back events. One of the events I attended was Farm-to-Table fundraiser, which had our very own nonprofit organization, Food Finders. It was, they always have these theme parties, which I love, I grew up on theme parties, and they did Las Vegas. They had an Elvis impersonator. I think Kenny would have been proud. He danced, he sang, he was, he was just great. So, I also attended the Youth Center Crystal Hearts Ball. I'd never went to the car museum before, and it was just incredible seeing the Batman Mobile. I've always watched that kind of stuff. So, it was great seeing all of these vehicles that were used, and, you know, movies and motion pictures, and come to life right there. You could take a lot of photos, and just honoring so many great, incredible people who serve our community. I did want to take this time also, since it's not on the agenda, but I wanted to talk about, I've been approached by several residents in regards to the removal of the speed humps in what we call right now Apartment Row, and I just wanted to find out, they've received a policy, however, when you review the policy, it's not being adhered to. And so, I wanna find out, why are these speed humps being removed? While I was talking with one of them, a little girl was crossing, and a car came speeding through. So, it is a safety measure for these speed humps to slow down the speed of these vehicles, and they're just getting removed. Today, I went around and drove around, and there's still signs stating that they're speed humps, but there's no longer speed humps. And a lot of these residents are concerned because their kids play in that area. They said electric bikes are coming through, vehicles are speeding up, and they're not receiving the information that they need that can really address why these are being removed, other than this policy. But from when I reviewed the policy, I asked a lot of the residents, were they notified two weeks prior to the traffic commission's consideration? They said no. I've actually spoken with several of the traffic commissioners, and also reviewed the agenda and the minutes, and there has not been anything in discussion about these speed humps being removed. So, if anybody can provide some clarification as to why these cautionary speed humps have been removed, and it's not following, it's not following the policies that are, that are being listed and given to different residents who've inquired about it.
We can provide a memo to that effect, to the entire council.
Okay, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. And that is it.
Thank you. Councilmember Hibbert?
Thank you. I appreciate the memo for the, the speed humps. Also, I had two neighbors, as I was out walking around, mentioned wanting them, and then was provided the policy, so any additional details appreciated. I wanna say to my colleagues up here, thank you for all you're doing for the city. Each of you have been in this community a lot longer than myself. You have relationships, you have, your roots are very deep here in the community, and as I'm walking around and talking to neighbors, they share stories of each of you on different, whether it's through the schools or different organizations that, that they've met you through, and that, I wanted to share that. I, I always liked hearing that, but I wanted to share that and say thank you for all that you guys are doing. This past month, I was walking around the Highlands, my neighborhood, and talking with neighbors, and the interactions with the residents are always a joy because they're so surprised that a council member shows up on their door. I guess they don't, they don't expect that, but that's kind of my favorite opportunity to connect with the residents, because I'm at their house, I'm on their porch, and they're gonna bring up something like speeding, or want the traffic to slow down, or speed humps, something that matters to them right there. So, I'm gonna keep doing that. I think I'll be in the Highlands between now and the end of, end of the year. I attended the Heroes Luncheon with the Chamber and got to watch all the first responders get recognized for their courage and bravery. I was at the JFTB table, the base is in my district, so I feel like I have a unique relationship with them. Colonel Fox was there, and he chose a gentleman named Major Vu to be the honoree, and I had, I was able to meet Major Vu last year. The base has a drainage ditch that was neglected for several years and not maintained, and it's been a real pain for the neighbors in the Highlands on Cherry because it was deemed an environmental habitat. So then, when Colonel Fox shows up to maintain the drainage ditch, he can't touch anything for environmental reasons. So, I made some calls last year, and Major Vu was actually the gentleman who was helping me address all of that, and we had, we had a community meeting at one of the residents' houses on Cherry, and he came out, at the goodness of his heart, to talk about the mosquitoes and the drainage ditch. So, it was nice to see that he was recognized. I'm sure he does a lot more important things than talking about mosquitoes, but very important. Thank you, Major Vu. I attended a Los Al football game, and I'm looking forward to supporting the team this season. They played a Hawaiian team and came up a little bit short, but we're coming back. I also attended the welcome-home ceremony for the JFTB's 40th Infantry Division. They were deployed in, in the Middle East, so it was good to see so many of them come home. On Celebrate Los Al, I volunteered at the Precious Life Shelter, and I'm going to share a stat with you that's going to blow your mind. So, I'm sorting clothes with Laura, one of the board members. I'd never met her before. They have trash bags and trash bags full of donations, okay? And she said that 40%, 4-0% of the nonprofit's budget is funded through the clothing donations, which blew my mind, because of all that they're doing for those mothers and those babies, and 40% is funded through clothing donations. So, I say that to encourage the community, if you have donations, drop them off at Precious Life, because they really do, they clean that up, they put that in their thrift shop, and they immediately put it to, put it to their programming, which is, I mean, fascinating business model. At Celebrate Los Al, I also met Bob. Bob's a Korean War veteran, and he was 95, and he was an absolute joy. I think we all remember Bob. He was there with his family and his friends, and they said that he, he had never been recognized before, so they were so happy that he was recognized, because 95-years-old Korean War vet, and never recognized before. So, he left that day with certificates of recognition from Michelle Steele, his Congresswoman, Janet Nguyen, his state senator, Treetaw, his state assemblyman, and, and the city of Los Alamos. So, thank you for all your efforts with that. We had about double the veterans that, that were there last year, and to hear a 95-year-old guy had never been recognized before, that, yeah, let's keep doing that. This past weekend, I attended the annual Food Finders event with their Las Vegas theme, and if you're not familiar with Food Finders, they're a nonprofit here in town. What they do is they rescue food that is not bad, but can't be sold or distributed for various reasons, and they, they get that into the hands of people who, who need it the most. They move these, they move food not, you know, not by the pallet, but by, by the truckload. So, if you, if you ever wanna check them out, Food Finders, they're, you know, they're here in town. And I'll end with this. So, St. Hedwicke is in my district, they're having Autumn Fest this Friday, Saturday, Sunday. It's their annual event where you'll see, I'm sure we'll have a little bit of a parking issue on the boulevard, but if you have a chance, if you're around, head over there, buy a ticket, buy a drink, go on a ride, so support, support the cause. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dobie?
Okay, okay. So, I also attended the Congresswoman Steele's Seniors of Distinction, and what was most profound to me is that his daughter came running in, and she was able to see her father get honored. And my dad passed like eight years ago, and we didn't really have, so I love seeing people have that relationship with their daddy. She's like, "Oh, that's my daddy, that's my daddy." So, I got to see that. So, that made me happy. I'm a little selfish right there, but that brought me a lot of joy. I went to my OCAG Board Meeting, where we approved the budget for 2025. I went to my ACCOC Executive Board Meeting, where we discussed various legislative updates, amongst other things. But the reason that the legislative updates are important is because when there are things specific to our city, our county, or our region, I'm able to get ready-made letters for support or to oppose, and then I can get them to our, and Emmeline, I only know about three words and what your title is, so I always say, she's the legislative person that gets this stuff done. So, we can get it to her, and she can get those letters back out, so that Los Al's voice is represented in those different rooms. I also went to an ACCOC-sponsored event, the FALC Emergency Response Training, where I learned how to administer Narcan. And it's not that complicated. I was ready to, you know, really have to know. It's just, I'm not gonna show you right now, but it's very simple. now, but it's very simple. And we also learned how to administer various types of tourniquets, and it was just kind of emergency things that you don't typically think about, but if you're in that situation, you do wanna know, where do you put that tourniquet to be most effective? And there's places that you can't put it, or the person will bleed out. So it was very fascinating. I went to my SCAG Committee Meeting, and I finally learned who provides the oversight to HCD. And HCD is the entity that gives us all of our housing numbers. Anybody wanna know who it is? It's taken me three years to get this information. Guesses? I'll just tell you, it's the governor, and that's why we can't fight those numbers, because it's his mandate! And he controls the machine. So, what I'm currently working on is getting, they have a legislative branch of SCAG that, I'm trying to skip a couple rungs, so that I can get a seat at that table, so that I can go in there peacefully with HCD, and help them kind of understand it in a more broad, you cannot give us all, you can't treat me like Huntington Beach, only because they're big, I'm not for any other reason, just because they're big, or LA, or anybody else. We're the second smallest city in all of Orange County, we've got 11,500. Right after us is La Palma, I think they're like two or three times our size, and then Villa Park, which snuck in being a city, I got a love for Villa Park, okay? But they're like 5,500 people, so that's the importance of going to those SCAG meetings. Now, the other part that I'm just gonna sneak in there, is that's where I learned about the pocket of money that was available to bring back to staff. So that 5 million plus, was it 1.9 million that I didn't even know about? It's so critical to be in those meetings, because if you're not, you just won't know, it's hidden under so much bureaucracy, so many like secret passwords, secret handshake, but when you're physically in the room, you can pick it up, and then I just go and make a friend, and give it to my staff, who has a shovel-ready project, and bam, 6.9 million dollars. So what else we got? I also was at Celebrate Los Al, and I'm just gonna be honest, the reason that I invited the Firehawks was because it took almost three hours to wash all the windows in the mobile homes last year, and I just wanted help, because I wash the windows, but then we had like four people that said they wanted to come and do it. So my daughter and I went and planted plants at her preschool, so that was really cool, she got to go back to her roots, which started at the Los Alamoitos preschool right over here. And I was also at the Veterans Recognition, very briefly, but long enough to see the amazing job that our city does in honoring our veterans. There was one gentleman, and it might have been Bob, but his family came from Minnesota! They flew in, like, that's what a big deal it was, for them to come and see their family member. So I'm honored, and I'm so proud of my staff for giving them that opportunity, I think that that's amazing, and I love our city for stuff like that. Then I had to run over to present a resolution to working wardrobes, they came and they did a presentation here, to commend them for their commitment to getting people back to work. And then I also was in DC for most of last week, advocating to as many legislators as I could get into FaceTime with, but then also finding out, where a lot of people don't know, that just because you can't get federal, state, or county money, there are still buckets of money, and it's available. You just gotta know where, who, to go and ask. So there's a few websites, I'm gonna get them to you, because you gotta get it before the budget expires. So it was a, an experience, because I didn't necessarily understand that before, like, I knew, okay, I can go to Michelle Steele, she'll have money, we can go to Janet, we can get her money, we can go, we can go to Tree for Legislation. And, you know, maybe next year, we'll be able to go to a supervisor for some discretionaries, we gonna leave that alone. But there are buckets of money at the federal level that I think people don't know about, and as a small city, I think that we miss out on a lot of opportunities, but like I like to say, we're small, but we're so mighty. And rest assured, they knew Los Al was in the room. Last thing was, I missed my mosquito and vectors meeting, because I was in DC, but we won an award, y'all, I made them create a category for small cities, because I could never win! I can't have a billboard, I can't compete with cities that can have billboards! So they, they listened to my feedback, and they created a small cities division, and we won. So that's what I've been up to.
Thank you very much, between my colleagues, I think everything's pretty much covered. I just would like to address the Knights on Pine, because I did go to that as well. Lot of great vendors, lot of good food, so I encourage you to come out to the next one. And with that, we will adjourn tonight's meeting at 7:54 PM.